Your Zakaat can change lives. It can help them have smiles. It can help them see a future full of opportunities and love. Donate your Zakaat to our cause to help the orphans, children, and the vulnerable. Your Zakaat donation has incredible power. Give Zakaat to Basma to save lives and serve humanity.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. My name is Janan Sarwar and on behalf of ITV USA, I'd like to welcome you to our daily Ramadan show entitled, "Our Prosperous Ramadan." On this show, we interview inspirational Muslims to learn more about what they do in their professional spheres and communities and how they're prospering this Ramadan. We're very happy to say this episode and the future episodes are sponsored by Basma. Basma is a nonprofit organization dedicated to helping the underprivileged of Bangladesh. We are very happy to have their support. So now it is my honor to introduce you to our guest today, Sister Abraar Omish. She is a 27-year-old political activist. She's currently the Fairfax County School Board Member-at-Large and the first Libyan-American elected official in the United States. And she was one of the first Muslim women elected in Virginia and the youngest ever in her role. She has a number of accomplishments. She's done so many things and she's very active in the community. She's a political activist and has so much to offer. I have so much more that I can introduce you by, but I want to, without further ado, I want to go ahead and introduce her and welcome her. So Assalamualaikum Sister, thank you so much.
Wa alaikum wa rahmatullahi wabarakatuh. It's a pleasure and privilege to be with you this afternoon. I'm looking forward to our discussion, Insha Allah.
Yes, Insha Allah. So, you know, I think I just scratched the surface of what you do and what you've done in your, your career so far. And I would love for you to share a little bit more with the audience about your background and experiences.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, I, I like to always kind of re-center. People kind of see the person where they're at, at this particular moment, you know, holding a looked at office, et cetera, which, you know, many see as a, as an accolade. I also see as a, as a huge responsibility and burden at times, but an honor always. And, and it's, you know, not always intuitive to kind of trace back how that even started or what that journey has looked like. And I say that especially for us as Muslims because I think that ultimately it does start with a clarity of intention, a clarity of purpose and mission, and then ultimately service and service that is for the sake of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala and that is for the community. So I had not realized I would end up here. I actually, it started when I was in high school myself, in this school system, and noticing gaps and challenges across my school and amongst my peers of what I thought should be changed and what I thought was unfair in the community. So, you know, I came from a family where my parents sacrificed everything they had and that they could to ensure that we're successful. But I also grew up with kids in public school whose parents couldn't do that for them, whether it's because they couldn't afford the same resources, you know, opportunities, like tutoring, for example. I had a friend who couldn't, you know, finish a class with us because her family couldn't afford the support she needed to be successful. And that stuck with me and it was an unfairness that even on the, the level of youth and young people, that money would be a barrier to the potential that someone has to be successful. And if that's happening at the youngest age, then how are we claiming to cultivate a society and a community where everyone can succeed? You know, when it's at the level of kids, right? Because kids can't really control their circumstances. And certainly none of us have chosen the families we've been born into. So that, you know, seeing that, that kind of unfairness and consistency and also the possibility of what these kids could be instead or how much could come out of investing in that arena and making sure that, you know, there's equal opportunity and access is really what kind of propelled me to then some, do some of the work in the community through Girl Scouting and also through some nonprofit free tutoring work that we, that I facilitated with some friends in school and starting just weekend tutoring centers, you know? I mean, we would just gather some friends and bring, advertise that we were willing to offer free tutoring. And parents, especially those of underprivileged backgrounds, would bring their kids. And that, there was a mentorship relationship there too that allowed that kid to kind of look up to that high school student and, and feel motivated and invested in their learning and in their success. And Alhamdulillah, that ultimately expanded, you know? Every year we wanted to try to grow it further. When I started with, with a friend of mine from middle school, you know, it was one place and then the next summer we both decided to, to take each of us a different locate, you know, a separate location. And then we gathered more friends to kind of manage different locations. And it's just grown, Alhamdulillah, to being about 20 locations now, but over the past 10 years. But the, I, I share that because that's kind of where it came from. It started from identifying need in the community, unfairness that exists disparity. Through a recognition of privilege that I kind of had and didn't necessarily deserve, particularly deserve. But because of the, the chance that exists in life, you know, had access to, Alhamdulillah, and recognizing that that blessing is nothing but Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala's mercy on, on me. And then building forward and ultimately that led me to being more involved in school board, you know, committees. I was appointed to a variety of committees based on that work. That made me better understand the policy level of the conversation and ultimately run for this position. Because it ended up just being a natural next step for the level of work that I was doing in the community and especially being a product of the system, which does give me an edge, Alhamdulillah. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the impact too of, of 9/11 on how we thought about ourselves as a community broadly, you know, where we have people making decisions for us and ones that are based in a view of us that is entirely dehumanized and completely misunderstands the community and anything it's about. And we're, it almost felt we're the subjects of that. And so really beginning to question power and authority around that time when in our message, we knew that there were people spying on us, but we didn't really know who they were and we couldn't trust, you know, the situation and people felt unsafe. And the whole conversation around can you wear hijab, can you not? Like, can a man have a beard at work? I mean, all of that ended up resulting in deep questions around why these people are empowered and why they should still, you know, continue to be if, if they weren't representing us in a way that at the bare minimum sauce is human. So a combination of those things kind of led me to think of this, you know, pursuit of public service. Ultimately with the goal, of course, of serving all of creation, the most underprivileged, the vulnerable, uplifting those voices that are at the table. Because that's ultimately part of my Ibadah and Insha Allah, pursuit of pleasure of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala.
Masha Allah, that's so beautifully stated. You know, you, you just captured the, your intention for doing everything and what you're known for doing and why you're doing it. So I absolutely see how you are known in the community and the things that you're doing as championing the equity and making sure you're, you can empower these voices and the perspective of those that are underprivileged or don't have those chances. And so I think that that's really empowering and also inspiring to, to me to see. And, you know, I wonder how, I definitely want to discuss a little bit more about your position that you have, but how has it been being a visible Muslim and being, you know, the face of, in, in these spaces where you are maybe very often the only one representing? Because you used that word too, the representation. So how's that been for you?
Yeah, it's, it's interesting because, you know, I, I guess having been a minority within a minority, like even, it's one thing to be a minority broadly in the society. And then I think as Muslims, even as an Arab, et cetera, I was a, even within social justice circles, we're often forgotten and not included or, or thought of as a dimension of social justice. So, you know, there's, there's race, there's socioeconomic status, there's disability, all kinds of different ways of gender thinking about social justice. But religion is not often one of them. And we kind of get stuck where society treats Muslims as a, as a racial group nowadays. There's a lot of research now showing that, emergent research. But we're a religious, we're a faith community and, and there's a lot that binds us. So, and we have unique challenges. So it's, it's an interesting situation where it, it does provide though a lens where I've found myself representing a variety of groups that are not at the table as this whole voice that will think of them or mention them. And so that's been a privilege. And I mean groups that have nothing to do with personal identity that I hold, but that otherwise have not been included. I think, you know, there's definitely the difficulty, you mentioned that the idea of being a first. You know, it's funny because I came in, it was all accolades at first, right? It's like, oh, you know, for the first time we see someone that looks like her elected on the sevil, et cetera. And I, I think, yeah, I mean, up to this day, I'm the only Hijabi that's ever been elected in the state of Virginia. And so you, you come in excited about that, but I, I didn't quite realize why people celebrate it so much because it comes with tremendous difficulty. And on the job, I mean, people don't understand so many things about what that represents, what it's about. And I find, I found the generational thing makes it a little bit more difficult too. Because within my generation, there's more of a comfort with diversity and there's a more exposure just with urbanization and the way our world has changed. But I suspect perhaps with the generation before and the one before that, there are some challenges where I might be one of the only Muslims somebody has met or certainly one of the only ones who's willing to have an opinion and speak up as a Muslim, young Muslim woman. I think there are so many stereotypes, you know, that cover what that is supposed to look like. And then it, it kind of just unsettles people, like it's not consistent with what their expectation is. And some people just can't get past it, you know? I don't walk into the room thinking of myself as a Hijabi or like as a Muslim woman, you know? Certainly it's a core part of what informs my values and all of that. But I should think of myself as another person with an opinion and a contribution. And I'm engaging on that level. That's certainly how I felt growing up in the school system. But there, I, I realize that that's not how I'm perceived. So I inevitably have to confront it. And certain things said through my mouth will be received differently than they are through someone else's, even if it's, you know, exactly verbatim, the same thing. So there are definitely challenges and that's not even mentioning, I mean, the level of, you know, even to the point of death threats and, you know, things like that, that come in the way. But again, you bring yourself back to that core. I'm not doing this for a reason other than pleasing Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala and fighting for those who are most vulnerable, who don't have a seat at the table, correcting wrongs of the past, et cetera. And so that, that purpose, that mission is beyond people. And so that ends up allowing you to kind of lean on that, find strength in that and transcend above the hate that's inevitably a part of this. The public peace that you mentioned is, it's, it's definitely a difficult thing. And it's, it's taken a toll, not just on me, but on my family. And especially at certain pressure points where there is a specific attention around an action or a statement or something that I may have made. It, it ruffles the wrong feathers and, and it makes it, this is the challenge again of being a first where something I say that is entirely mainstream with how we think as a community or on a social justice issue, like the Palestinian issue is a very obvious example. Stating just something that is so widely understood and accepted by a certain community is immediately controversial because the majority is so unexposed or so used to not even entertaining or thinking about that side. And I never intend to be controversial. My objective always is to push, you know, for justice, uplift voices, but naturally it will be. Because that voice has not been at the table for so long. And there are often efforts to keep those voices out of the, you know, the conversation. So, Subhanallah, that's been a challenge too of me just wanting to be kind of a wholesome public servant, someone who's thinking about the variety of perspectives, et cetera. But finding that people view it as controversial, even if it has nothing to do with trying to start a fire and certainly doesn't come from that place. But just by the mere fact that it's new, it's not been brought to the table before, it's unsettling and people don't know what to do with that discomfort quite yet. And I think as a country too, we haven't developed a, we haven't been so, we haven't socialized ourselves as a community to accept difference and to be okay with engaging on that level and understanding that actually we, we totally disagree. But that doesn't mean I have to cancel you and that also doesn't mean I have to hate you. We just sit with that and understand how we can coexist with that. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done still.
Your Zakaat can change lives. It can help them have smiles. It can help them see a future full of opportunities and love. Donate your Zakaat to our cause to help the orphans, children, and the vulnerable. Your Zakaat donation has incredible power. Give Zakaat to Basma to save lives and serve humanity.
Yes, no, that's really very important and very powerful that you shared both the privilege of the, the work that you've done and being the only, being the first, the accolades, but the reality in the side of, you know, your, your intentions of amplifying voices that has given you a platform and then this platform, then the misinterpretation of which, which honestly is literally the extension of what has been happening before. Representation or misrepresentation of Muslims or misrepresentation of something that you say that can then vilify you again, or, you know, unfortunately impact your family. But all that being said, and I agree that there's a lot of work to be done. Do you believe that other Muslims and young Muslims that are watching, do you think more Muslims should be involved and get into this space?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, 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 no, I'm glad you, you, to put that in the context, I can talk about the hate there, you know? And there are certainly groups well organized, well funded that exist and have always existed to get you before you even started. So it doesn't matter who you are, it doesn't matter what you have to say, it's just you're who you are. But, but none of that should take away from this broader, truly noble opportunity to serve humanity, to serve Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala through serving his creation and, and, and making the world for, it's kind of cheesy, but really making the world a better place, a more just place, a fairer society where people who want to seek opportunity or move up, you know, have upward mobility can, that's a huge privilege. I mean, it is the work of, it is prophetic work. This is the kind of thing that I think fully aligns with our Deen and we're uniquely positioned. Where actually becoming better people and better Muslims is also becoming better members of our society and better contributors to the community. And in fact, is a part of our duty and obligation, you know? Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala tells us to be witnesses for justice. And in another narration, witnesses for him, for justice, to uphold justice. And that's, you know, as, as we continue to live in societies and in community, in communities today across this country where people are homeless, people are hungry. And it's not necessarily even because of their fault. They're born into circumstances or they have mental health challenges that the system doesn't know how to absorb. And so we put them in jails rather than taking care of them and giving them the supports they need. I mean, on and on and on of the examples of injustice and just complete a, a lack of dignity for humanity that our Deen calls upon us, you know? In the Quran, Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala tells us that he's dignified humankind. And that's part of our task is to constantly build forward towards everyone having a certain level of dignity and being able to, to seek a, a level of self-actualization and, and being who they are and contributing to their broader community and society through a collective caretaking community. So that's something that's completely unfortunately missing. And, and that's a product of a lot of things, you know? Capitalism and the way that our society, with urbanization and everything, just the rapid pace of things. We don't, you know, we, we don't have to diagnose the problem today, but really the point is to say that this is part and parcel of our obligation as Muslims to be contributing members and, and to not stand complicit in the face of these injustices that we're seeing. And so how can we not, right? Even if it's not through a full-time commitment of public service and politics, though I would encourage everyone to do it. And despite the challenges, there is so much beauty in hearing people's stories and having the opportunity to do things that helped, that changed their lives. And, and it doesn't necessarily take much from you to do it when you have a certain position, you know? So those are all remarkable blessings really to be in such a position of community trust. And I, you know, think Muslims are really well equipped to do it because of, again, that, that merge of mission where our, our pursuit of being better Muslims and better servants of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala is ultimately exactly what, you know, benefits the community. Just contributing to service and uplifting those who have been sidelined for so long and making sure that resources are allocated fairly and that integrity is maintained in the public space, which unfortunately in politics is missing. So I absolutely would encourage every young person out there, every Muslim, every, you know, anyone who has a perspective and has a fire in them to, to fight for others to enter the space. Because unfortunately for too long, it's been dominated by sometimes well-intended, but folks who have too much privilege that blinds them really from seeing the needs and being in touch with the realities of people.
Absolutely, this is really beautifully stated as well. And I knew you would describe this as very fulfilling work of the public service. And I'm going to recap, you know, some of the terms that you use because it was really, once again motivating to those who may be interested. You know, you're talking about key terms and you related it to how it relates to just being a Muslim, upholding justice, the, the types of integrity and dignity of others, equity work and how this is prophetic work and we can become better contributors of society. And that also in turn helps us be better Muslims. I think that's fantastic. And you did share that there's large and small ways. So if someone might think, okay, maybe doing what you're doing may be a big, big step for them. What are some small recommendations, small ways that people can get involved?
Yeah.
Their backyard even?
Yeah, absolutely. And maybe before I say that, I also want to remind us, I guess, that when we put things in the context, what, what one would face trying to do public service or whatnot here is nothing compared to what the Sahabah, Ar-Radhun Allah Alaihim, like at the time faced the Da'wa, right? I mean, being killed and all of that, right? But the many stories that we know, this is just our modern day kind of situation where we were facing difficulty, but ultimately for a broader, more noble purpose. But to your point of where do you even get started? This can seem really daunting. You're not going to become, you know, a representative of a million people overnight. So it's, it's something that's gradual. And again, it starts from that place of deep intention, conviction and, and wanting to serve. And that's ultimately where Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, Insha Allah, will bless it. But, you know, it's, it's, it's as simple as, you know, attending a, a local community organization event and exposing yourself, seeing some of the people who do the work, beginning some of those conversations. You know, every neighborhood or community has some kind of civic organization or for those who are homeowners, a homeowners association or local party, you know, Democrat or Republican meetings. Or some, sometimes they're like parent groups. For example, if you're a parent, the Parent Teacher Association at your school, almost every school has a PTA. Just showing up is the, is the starting point. And you'll begin to see and understand where the needs are, what's possible and honestly how behind we are as a community in being missing from these spaces. Because you'll probably be the only Muslim that shows up to any of these things. So, you know, just starting with something like that, a school event, meeting with your school, your child's print school principal, reaching out to literally, you know, Google, look up who your representatives are, set up a meeting with them, very basic. It's their job to meet with you, that is their obligation, you're entitled to that. What doesn't mean you don't have to, you shouldn't be gracious, but nonetheless. So don't feel, sometimes we come in and we feel like, oh, like you're imposing or you're asking for too much. But no, this is the public servant's job to represent you properly, right? And, and if they don't know, if you feel there are needs that are missing from their understanding or that, that certain needs you have are not reflected in their decision-making, then it's your obligation to go out there and, and to make that heard. So as, on the most basic level, just showing up to something. And then taking the next step slowly, you know? As you become more of a, a regular part of that, of your broader community, you'll begin to understand what those needs are. You'll start to see things like, oh, you know, we're not taking, we're not recycling, for example, in this county on a regular level. Or, you know, oh, we have a homelessness issue and we've got a lot of people who are begging on the street. You know, on and on, whatever it is for your community, but that's part of the beauty and that's actually part of the prophetic model of kind of growing where you're raised or where you're, you know, flourishing where you're planted. Because you have an understanding of that community. You can't just come in from the outside, plop in and, and think that you know what's going to be good for people. You need to hear from people, connect with other human beings, observe what's going on on the ground. And that will better inform your next step. So I would say start by showing up to an event or meeting with, you know, a local elected, something very bare bones, basic. And that will expose you to, once you understand, then you can do something about it. And the ideas will naturally come to you as you immerse yourself more in those spaces, Insha Allah, so.
Yes, those are all really great practical recommendations, Insha Allah, people will, you know, and attempt to do these. Do you mind sharing what it means to be the position that you're in, the school board member at large?
Yeah, I mean, in a technical sense or?
Or the kind of work that you do?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, so generally, you know, yeah, it's, it's funny because we think that language barrier is just like English in this country sometimes, but language barrier is also understanding how these systems work. There's not broad literacy of what, what even is a school board? What, what are the different governing bodies that exist? What does it mean that I live in a district? And, you know, so for, on our side of the work, usually school systems will have somebody who's called the superintendent, who's kind of like the CEO that runs the operation of the school system and makes sure it's running properly. But then there's also a school board. And the school board is kind of like, just like in a company or something. You have a board of directors or a board of advisors or something. And we're ultimately responsible for the wellbeing of the system. And so we are the ones that hire that superintendent, we oversee the work, et cetera. In some places it's elected, in some places it's appointed. In my position, it's an elected one and we actually had to run an entire campaign, political campaign for over a year to convince people to come out and vote for obviously me and then the others who I was running with. And so ultimately it is a privilege and a trust to be placed in that position for a certain amount of time. And my duty then is a variety of things. On the most, you know, in, in the most clear way, it's setting policy. So the school board determines big picture, what is the school system's expectations? So we say that, you know, for example, actually for things that might be relevant to the community, this, the calendar is something that we decide. What days are off, what days are not off, when do we start school, when does school end? And obviously that's very relevant when it comes to things like Eid. Does Eid matter enough to take it off or not? So imagine if you have a board of people, none of whom understand our needs, don't look like us, don't, you know, practice like us, they're not going to even think about that. And if they were to think about that, they're not going to value it in the same way that you might understand the indignity that comes with having to go to school on Eid or, you know, having it, all this material being covered and you feel you have to go because otherwise you're going to feel, fall behind in school. So that's just one example. So we set a, this calendar, we review the budget. This is the, one of the most important things we do. So in a system like ours, for example, we have over $3 billion that goes to the public school system. And that money is decided by the school board, where it goes, what's important and what's not, right? Those are critical decisions. Do the, do the schools with more lower income kids get more support or not? Do we provide certain languages at the various schools? Do we fund that or not? That comes down to things that are very personal, right? Like, does your kid have access to learning Arabic, Urdu, Farsi, whatever it might be in their school? That's a school board level kind of decision. We, we decide what we fund across the division. When COVID happened, you know, how do we, are we virtual, are we, are we in person? What services and supports are provided? On and on and on, do we use the funding to provide additional tutoring? So if your child suffers in school, do they get extra support from the school? Or are you expected to pay for that? All of these are school board level decisions and, and deeply affect what kind, okay? Another one that will be relevant to this community. The kinds of food offerings, where we get the food, is the food halal or not? And when we offer it to kids, you know, is it labeled? Do they know like what, what options they have? And if it's being subsidized, especially for lower income students by the school system, is it fair that it's being subsidized if it's not halal? And then Muslim kids can't access that kind of service? So, you know, there are so many ways that it intersects with our personal lives and deep, deeply, you know, weight-related ways to our identities that if we're not present, that's not even a part of the conversation, again, let alone having the will to do it. So those are some of the things that I, you know, I'm involved in on a, a large scale level policy. And then of course, on the communal level, people come with all kinds of complaints, you know? Their kid wants to switch classes or their this and that happened or they want this job or, you know? And then I get these cases where on a regular basis, I follow up with staff and try to find solutions that help them while obviously maintaining the integrity of the system and being fair to everyone. So, yeah, I mean, it's a variety of roles. And then there's the public role, obviously, of encouraging public education. So there's unfortunately been a huge attack on public education. People are trying to move away from funding public schools. But really it's one of the best things that we have as a community because it subsidizes, I mean, for so many families that don't have even access to food. You know, public schools ends up being the source of the meals a kid eats in that day. It just provides an incredible wealth of services and is one of the best. It just provides an incredible wealth of services and is one of the best assets we have as a community. So being a public face that's able to encourage our support of that is is really important. And I know a lot of Muslim families feel disconnected from that because sometimes the public school system isn't teaching the things that we might want or isn't facilitating the spaces with the accommodations necessary, like prayer rooms, for example, which is something a school board member can change. So you should run for school board in your locality. But those are, those are things that we can bring to the table rather than you know, kind of like opting out of that and deciding we're just our own isolated thing. We can choose to go in there and make it our own, just like others have.
Yeah, that's really fantastic. And I love that, you know, you you even mentioned earlier that you are coming to this and there's an angle of this because you've been through this exact school system. And I actually also attended public school growing up as well. So I think that what you were just sharing is that there are so many different avenues and ways that being on on a school board, because maybe people don't even know that what what you can do and what that power and trust and privilege and all the things that you shared it 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 can do. So I I'm sure I have a million more questions, but we've been asking every person since it is still Ramadan. We've been asking everyone to share, you know, what they love to do during Ramadan, what their favorite traditions are, anything that you'd like to share about this holy month.
Yeah, no, Ramadan, Mubarak to everyone watching and to you. You know, I I think Ramadan is really that opportunity for the spiritual reset. Sometimes this work can get really intense. And so I can really appreciate times when I'm I'm kind of forced and and encouraged to prioritize connecting with Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, reorienting myself, resetting my goals, kind of finding something in the beginning of the month that is my goal to maintain for the rest of the year. And then you have those thirty days of boot camp to kind of get there and and develop a routine. So you know, obviously that comes with a lot of community and iftara is all the time and family and Taraweeh. And there's obviously the culture around it, but ultimately in alignment again with that piece of the purpose piece that Ramadan, for me, one of the best things I get out of it is is a practice in that self restraint. And that self restraint in Ramadan happens to be, you know, food and water and basic necessities, but on a longer scale is training us to have self restraint in in all things that we do, our own emotional regulation, the way, you know, whether we get angry or not, the words that we use. You know, disciplining ourselves to continue to to push even when we're tired and hungry and everything for the sake of the cause. That's ultimately the thing I get most out of this month, which aligns again with Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala prescribed Ramadan upon us for a reason. It's not just kind of a rote routine situation, done checklist, we did the thirty days and now we're moving on. But it informs how we apply that and connect that to what we do in our daily lives. The careers we have devoted ourselves to and our broader purpose of why we're on this earth and what we're committing our our limited, limited resources of our, you know, energy, time on this earth and health towards. So it connects to the public service piece for me where it's it's Insha Allah, Insha Allah, through my investment in it, making me a better public servant. Through that practice of self restraint and through reflection and of course, feeling more in touch with those who who are limited, appreciating the blessing that we have, right? And and recognizing that many don't have it. So Alhamdulillah, those have all been great opportunities and in terms of a tradition, I don't know, my family likes to do iftar together and that's always a blessing. So being able to do that and then Fajr as well. So after Suhur, reading little, we have these reflection things, you know, good deed of the day or Hadith of the day that we do together and I encourage that families to kind of come together for that because we take for granted sometimes as parents, the how much that matters and makes a difference in your child's life to just feel that they are being given that kind of attention and that there is warmth associated with Ramadan and and these rituals that we do because everywhere else, nobody's, you know, people aren't doing that around us as much. So in any case, I certainly wish everybody a blessed, blessed Ramadan. We're we're at the end here. You know, so just a few days left, but Insha Allah, we can maximize so that we can really feel the benefits of Eid. When we feel that we've earned it.
I mean, Insha Allah, yes, that's a beautiful way to put it. And you know, I really thought this was just simply an energizing conversation. I I loved that we were able to touch on, you know, your intentions, why you you serve in public service, your position, how it's been, you know, the privileges you've had, some of the challenges, but overall how it is important for us as Muslims to get involved and and those practical steps of, you know, looking into what civic organizations are around us, homeowner organizations, parent teacher meetings and and even just meeting who our representative is. All of this to serve in a way that we can, as they say, and you've said, bloom where you're planted, right? So looking and taking in mind where you live in the prophetic model and and being able to apply and help those around us prosper, Insha Allah, especially those that aren't getting the resources, they aren't getting the sunlight, they aren't able to do that. So I I really hope anyone here paying attention took anything away, Insha Allah, that's our intention to to grow from learning and meeting people like you. It was just a pleasure. So Jazakallah Khair for to you for taking the time to to speak with me. And for everyone who is listening, Jazakallah Khair, please continue to tune in where we have these live every day during Ramadan. And as we were saying, Ramadan is almost ending, but it's been a pleasure. We also want to remind to to thank Basma, our sponsor, who is so generous to be having their support for this show and please check them out, Basma. And otherwise, it was my pleasure seeing you all today. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.